Relax.
No fault of the ground, right? So if something happens, no fault of the ground, we get that. It could be a sudden... If you're falling, pull out your water and your trash. That's a little bit different. So starting January first, the next year, we'll open to make sure that these fat people are in. And on the coal family, it's just a sewer rate. It has not enough water in it, but so... But we'll continue our ditch for the rest of this year. Just put that some way, kind of. I will, I guess, we need to make a motion there, just?
No.
We're gonna make a motion for proof, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion. Thank you. You can ask a question.
Yeah.
Still gonna take some water or pay the water, you take the sewer off?
Yeah.
If you feel...
Exactly.
Next year?
Yeah.
Okay. Place is saying...
Oh, then bring it on.
Okay. I'd pull, I'd pull ahead of that. But I don't drink wine, no.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, if a leak develops, you get a line broke.
Right.
That's an extreme situation. We've adjusted.
Right.
Yeah, back to the no fault of the ground.
I just wanna make sure that the sewer is still coming off of it.
We've actually got that policy, I think, that kind of where... How do you want to say, you know? Might appear to a hundred percent. We probably think, you know, who were calling our policy. For everybody. Think I'll second that? Second to Brandon, call the favor.
Uh-huh.
Whatever department report tonight? Uh, my thanks is to the central business lady. You don't want to say to the county, man, call the favor.
Said no.
Yeah, you gonna bring up the water issue there?
Oh, no, it's... It's on... On the... It said that, uh, changes water order on north lines.
Okay. Yeah, that's, uh... Yes. That is... When they end up doing, when it stopped doing work on North Line Green. If you take and go to the East Force Green Acres there. There's a, um, section that should have been included in that project. And for what, I don't know what the reason was. Uh, it was taken out. So we gotta... I think we have to look at it. Um... So it's, uh, we got the one more restructuring tied into another structure. And they've got, uh, twelve inch pipe. And they gotta do some stone back, backfill. Call on some spores and pungent area of the respirations. Another area is gonna be getting up water out of the back area of that. Into the... Or pit was here.
In green acres.
Yeah, just... Would it be right, would it be right if the house had to come from there out? God, no guarantee. And after getting home from the gym. It's gonna be on that side of the road, the south side of Green Street. So that's gonna be another pickup point, just more to go down the biggest pretty much.
What about that, that construction, the roads?
I'm not too worried about that, obviously. I don't go up there and drink or anything like that, no.
Well, I just told her that. There's one thing, pay them up and fix, fix it so that it would... And the water would go up on the...
Going there?
On the east side instead of running over on the...
Who told you that?
And then he had him say... And then that's one of the matchups on the east. But it's still on the line.
Let me do some jet on that for you, okay?
From the water tower.
So bringing up the one that goes to the right side of the tower now?
That was two years ago, keep it out my face though.
So many raises, actually.
Yeah, we drive by.
Well, I know when they drank the water towers, it got down so far they wouldn't drink. So I know they went in there and had to do a valve or something, fire hydrant there. And, uh, a lot of that is weakened out of that shut off valve. They got to pick that up and fix eventually. But that's why a lot of that water is coming down more often than I see it do.
It's just like that one too. And if they're everywhere.
I'll check, I'll check on this, I'll try to, I'll find out what...
Yeah, it's higher than the line, it's a... And if it's getting worse, you know, I got a few sink, uh, by the telephone pole there on the corner.
Oh, they have a thing with that one, okay.
I don't believe that. I saw what you're gonna do.
All right.
I don't know.
So...
I don't know what it is.
It was definitely used, but she did get that in.
And I was told seven years ago from a different mayor, to stand by property and let it fall in the sideline.
Excellent, I'm gonna speak to that stuff, there, man. Definitely. I will double check on this, thanks for your input.
Yeah, that's why I want to...
All right. Thank you.
Brian, um, I'm at it. Where they send that ditch up their own, uh, street, uh, North Line Street and turn going Green Acres? When you take their trap up North Line Street and turn into Green Acres without being in that ditch or getting over the other lane? I think it was just a line drop from there to me. I don't know if I do that or how, my car. I tried to do it. Well, you... You... It's a kind of a safety hazard, because you gotta get over the other lane to make that turn. And you're still probably gonna hit the ditch if you're gonna get in the lane alone.
Is there a pole or tree there?
No, the pole, might put it away. They run that ditch out all the way almost to the street. We turn, the wheel goes down into the ditch they make there. Which is good, it drains water. But it's so far out there that you gotta, gotta make a ninety degree turn going in that street. And most of the street, you know, kind of wire around.
You really wouldn't be able to do it in a trailer, definitely wouldn't do that.
No, you wouldn't with a trailer on. And almost the same way on the other end, and they've already got over the grass down there. Uh, on Wiggum Street, North Line Street. You come down there, there is a pole there, and you turn and go north on North Line Street. You can't probably make that turn because you gotta get over that other lane. They just gave you around in a corner. It looks like it's kind of a design issue, I don't know, but... You know, it's kind of a safety hazard, because you gotta get over that other lane, and that's not, you know, something you should do either.
Oh, okay. So we gotta... To do that other area, there's gotta a pole or thing on there. Over, uh, one of their public hours.
And that's kind of the area, he found that on the north side, that's...
This is the north side of, go ahead in the north side, you're doing the...
Is that going all the way down that column that goes under Green, Green Dale?
It goes by halfway up in there. I think they spaced up there like that.
Yeah, it was spaced up. I didn't know how far.
Certainly that's when the curtain's gonna be set.
I didn't know there was some flag down further than that, and I didn't know how far.
No matter how you said, I didn't know about halfway up that. Do that every day. And I give most of the... Finders and heavy, people are telling me, most of them. All right.
All right.
We don't want to... No, from the venue or any other business, we don't want to do that. All right. Okay.
All right.
Friday night, it's... Yes.
I've seen how already swallowed me.
That's a bad song.
The great honor of war, the city council meeting. Opened all families' place. Agreed. United States of America, do you know which state? I want to mention, under, uh, under the rule of justice law.
Maggie Holman? Maggie Holman?
All right.
Here, all right, you know? Thanks. Yeah? Good, good caller?
Here.
I'd like to see if I'm not here. Brian, Mayor Brian Ayer?
Yes.
Trying to see if you're able...
President.
So Church of Lord, here's who.
You have a chance to read the notes. Last minute, please. We're looking for a reading here. Don't make the motion. All right, so, yeah. Okay, that's good. All right, then, I'm ready. More than two, three, two, twenty, they're good, as you do.
Nothing's changed since I came back here. Like we were.
You working on a venue?
Five seconds.
There's a, but, you know, with the power, it's all black. Call the favor?
Uh-huh.
And the whole business, uh, you all have an email on the power department. And they're asking now, if you know stuff, call them, move. More work this, I have this on, we go ahead and, uh, the uniform is laid back and two foot in it. And there's some storage that should be, so... That's what I want to, pardon me, uh...
So we can all find a safe, right? We're gonna go out. Good.
Good.
We're, it's very closely discussed by the, the product, so I'm happy that we will make that most important. And we want to keep the power department, especially, of course, that's not necessarily, you know,... On the commercial deal, good.
Great, all right.
Uh-huh.
We're doing business, we're here, we have the... Project, we're on the fire, it's busy, it's hot. Roy?
Okay, it doesn't change the, um... It's your now copy, you have your original copy that you got a couple times ago. And then the blue copy here is just a brief breakdown of all.
Just sort of the hairdresser, you know, the...
I mean, there is the money. There is the money, and it would have to be in additional corporations of, or use the... You know, to give it home and, I mean, the insurance.
That would be better, yeah. Um... I don't know if that's spoken about, but there is the name you got out there. He was, uh... I need a little help myself. There is a supportive line, he was trying to... That was made, so I, we're people, we're, they're all, they're learning, they're doing it, but not... But you know, we're supporting the main society. Uh, that's why we were, we need to get that back up and going with the help of it, so... It's all over here, too.
Oh, I'll make sure.
Probably, I come up there, maybe, for that, or so.
I need to talk to Karen. Brian Ayer, she said she has a perfect, I guess the county's driver, wanting out of the board. That means Saturday, it's not, uh, where you're going. She said her long time ago, was to not, after, uh, the ride, send the county. Well, finally, when she thinks she's got some, uh, ideas that she's gonna bring forward for, uh, find, find any of the people that are... In the interim, uh, she would still like to, uh, have a county, and, and, where she knows the city's got a few. So, I just wanna, I, I, it's, it's... Their own, the long term work is to not, uh, send, uh, from, uh... Which you can do.
We'll get a local through, uh, vote. I'm gonna look at this, double, right? I made a motion, I made a motion, I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
Second? I'll say it.
All right. All right. You know, like, uh... If you want us to, uh, so, I mean, we talked about this in the last, last, uh... Steven Bowler, we're gonna talk, we have, you know, part time, and we have to go back and probably, there's not a, so far, part time... Supervising or someone that's clearly watching, something like that, because it's an actual salary order, so I might have to go back and... Doing a living on that. And, but it's, it's paid to pay. Who do you think, you, 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 you... And, uh, thank you, everyone, but, thank you. I wonder if I can see what's, if you, if... I'm gonna, I'm gonna look down, we're, it's, that first year, something like that. It's, it's, like, maybe, too. The what time?
Yeah.
I think you're on board.
So, I am not looking at the coordinates that sets its position, but it was set already in coordinates. And you probably should be looking at, uh, in, uh, coordinates. But if it's, without looking actually at the coordinates, I don't have the list them out. Some coordinates just have, basically, positions, say the part time position, you came at this rate, and now actually...
Look, something more is wanting to change on, like, we gotta set it out for a position. For a lot of cities and towns, had to set up from a start, a start port, up to X amount of hours, you know? Eventually, five, we probably five, you know, and do it, do it like that. Very, especially, especially in five minutes. But also...
Just starting to work through it, it looks like this is pretty neat, and it sounded like fire shooting.
I mean, because it's swimming.
So, just trying to look through here, see the street. And I'm assuming you don't have anything to do about part time. This position is, you would already, you know, it's... And I'm talking about the part time, it's not...
The, uh, part time position, did not even have the approved dollar amount, page, you know, the amount, do we have?
Having, you mean to amend this ordinance to achieve that, do we do that, do we? Yes.
The, uh, that's okay, right? Also, we'll get that. Um... Try to pull it down there, the, uh, the window. Right forward here, there's nothing fifty foot, five foot foot down there. I said, I don't know, thinking about it, so, um... What did you, how did you tell that? You, you know, you're, you do it, possibly, it's... I'm, I'm, only get, well, for, for, you know, we got, really big, I like those backside of, the first season. That's what really does the gas line, uh, firework, water line, so probably, it's got to probably... Those side will take it all the way up by the fence, you know, picking area as well, so, uh, it would be, be good and plenty of, of, of... Give it a nice, a look, if you, if you, right there. I guess, it's, it's, uh, yeah. Nice, all right. All right. You need to, for my favor? Say, good. I'm gonna try that forward to the, kind of, redevelopment, see if I do that, I'll take it to them. Help them out, too.
Yeah. Yeah, that's...
The other thing here, just with all the basket, uh, maybe the team, they're, they're careful, they're busy, and I could take a hundred percent of that. And have a part time story, so, uh, if we all came up with something, we want to say, you know, that, you know, it's, it's really important, if we still got...
This is to ordinance for extended healthcare coverage for retired employees. That any retired employee that has twenty-five years of employment with the City of Ragetti and maintains part-time employment with the City of Ragetti shall be entitled to participate in any insurance programs offered by the City of Ragetti.